Yeah. There's a whole night of meetings. So. 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 So.[97.12][97.12][S01. . So. 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 So.[106.12][106.12][S01. . So.[108.12][108.12][S01. .[109.12][109.12][S01. .[110.12][110.12][S01. .[111.12][111.12][S01. .[112.12][112.12][S01. .[113.12][113.12][S01. .[114.12][114.12][S01. .[115.12][115.12][S01. .[116.12][116.12][S01. .[117.12][117.12][S01. .[118.12][118.12][S01. .[119.12][119.12][S01. .[120.12][120.12][S01. .[121.12][121.12][S01. .[122.12][122.12][S01. .[123.12][123.12][S01. .[124.12][124.12][S01. .[125.12][125.12][S01. .[126.12][126.12][S01. .[127.12][127.12][S01. .[128.12][128.12][S01. .[129.12][129.12][S01. .[130.12][130.12][S01. .[131.12][131.12][S01. .[132.12][132.12][S01. .[133.12][133.12][S01. .[134.12][134.12][S01. .[135.12][135.12][S01. .[136.12][136.12][S01. .[137.12][137.12][S01. .[138.12][138.12][S01. .[139.12][139.12][S01. .[140.12][140.12][S01. .[141.12][141.12][S01. .[142.12][142.12][S01. .[143.12][143.12][S01. .[144.12][144.12][S01. .[145.12][145.12][S01. .[146.12][146.12][S01. .[147.12][147.12][S01. .[148.12][148.12][S01. .[149.12][149.12][S01. .[150.12][150.12][S01. .[151.12][151.12][S01. .[152.12][152.12][S01. .[153.12][153.12][S01. .[154.12][154.12][S01. .[155.12][155.12][S01. .[156.12][156.12][S01. .[157.12][157.12][S01. .[158.12][158.12][S01. .[159.12][159.12][S01. .[160.12][160.12][S01. .[161.12][161.12][S01. .[162.12][162.12][S01. .[163.12][163.12][S01. .[164.12][164.12][S01. .[165.12][165.12][S01. .[166.12][166.12][S01. .[167.12][167.12][S01. .[168.12][168.12][S01. .[169.12][169.12][S01. .[170.12][170.12][S01. .[171.12][171.12][S01. .[172.12][172.12][S01. .[173.12][173.12][S01. .[174.12][174.12][S01. .[175.12][175.12][S01. .[176.12][176.12][S01. .[177.12][177.12][S01. .[178.12][178.12][S01. .[179.12][179.12][S01. .[180.12][180.12][S01. .[181.12][181.12][S01. .[182.12][182.12][S01. .[183.12][183.12][S01. .[184.12][184.12][S01. .[185.12][185.12][S01. .[186.12][186.12][S01. .[187.12][187.12][S01. .[188.12][188.12][S01. .[189.12][189.12][S01. .[190.12][190.12][S01. .[191.12][191.12][S01. .[192.12][192.12][S01. .[193.12][193.12][S01. .[194.12][194.12][S01. .[195.12][195.12][S01. .[196.12][196.12][S01. .[197.12][197.12][S01. .[198.12][198.12][S01. .[199.12][199.12][S01. .[200.12][200.12][S01. .[201.12][201.12][S01. .[202.12][202.12][S01. .[203.12][203.12][S01. .[204.12][204.12][S01. .[205.12][205.12][S01. .[206.12][206.12][S01. .[207.12][207.12][S01. .[208.12][208.12][S01. .[209.12][209.12][S01. .[210.12][210.12][S01. .[211.12][211.12][S01. .[212.12][212.12][S01. .[213.12][213.12][S01. .[214.12][214.12][S01. .[215.12][215.12][S01. .[216.12][216.12][S01. .[217.12][217.12][S01. .[218.12][218.12][S01. .[219.12][219.12][S01. .[220.12][220.12][S01. .[221.12][221.12][S01. .[222.12][222.12][S01. .[223.12][223.12][S01. .[224.12][224.12][S01. .[225.12][225.12][S01. .[226.12][226.12][S01. .[227.12][227.12][S01. .[228.12][228.12][S01. .[229.12][229.12][S01. .[230.12][230.12][S01. .[231.12][231.12][S01. .[232.12][232.12][S01. .[233.12][233.12][S01. .[234.12][234.12][S01. . I am. Okay. Do that it. Okay.
What's this clock? You want to start, Mr. Mayor?
It is six o'clock.
I call the October 12th, 2020 City Council Committee, the whole meeting, to order the clerk will call the roll, please.
Arivolo?
Present.
Brereton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman? Absent. McGee?
Here.
Porter?
Here.
Ratcliffe? Absent. Snow?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Chamberlain?
Present.
Let's see. Eight Aldermen present and the mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. There is also no public forum this evening. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, under item one, building, planning, and zoning unfinished business, there is none to conduct this evening. Under number two, building, planning, and zoning new business, under item A, we have a request for an extension to special use permit number 2018-15. May I have a motion to approve this request for extension?
I'll make that motion.
That will make that motion. Motion by Snow. May I have a second, please?
Second by Arivolo.
Second by Arivolo. Thank you. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor.
And Mayor, this is Mike Drela. I think I heard somebody else chime in. Who just joined the call? Maybe nobody.
So additional discussion concerning the motion now on the floor.
Wendy Frank?
Well, I think, uh, I think everybody should know that this is for the landfill, um, solar farm in the Conservation District. Is that not correct?
That is correct. Is Gina there this evening?
She is, uh, Mr. Mayor, but she's at the back of the room. Was there a question you had for her?
No, I did not, but Alderman Snow, uh, thought perhaps that the audience at home would need... Is that what you were thinking, Mr. Snow?
Yes, and...
Okay.
And how long does the extension last for?
The extension is good for one year. Um, the applicant was going to try to call in through conference, but I don't think he's chimed in yet. Uh, I do have a representative from the Conservation District here, but the extension is good for one year. Um, and they're asking for the extension because the state subsidy lottery should be opening up again. In order to be eligible for the lottery, all special uses must be active.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Frank had raised her hand with a question.
Alderman Frank, please proceed.
Yeah, I wanted to know some more insight from Gina, and she explained it, so I'm fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing not all of them favor approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow? Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Okay, thanks very much. Motion is approved unanimously. Under item B, we have commercial industrial building permit fees. Uh, Alderman Snow had requested a discussion on this item. Alderman Snow, please proceed.
So I guess my, um, deal would be to look at discussing whether we could, could or should cut the fees in half for a two- or three-year period in, um, in order to help stimulate growth in the commercial district. Because obviously, we get more tax dollars typically, um, from commercial properties. And I know there's, um, several projects that could or should be possibly going. Uh, off the top of my head, I thought we had a car wash out by the truck stop out on, um, um, near Tripp Road. And also the, um, car wash that was gonna be on, uh, State Street and Fairgrounds Road. Those are just two that I, um, that I'm possibly privy to, but I'm sure there's more. So just tossing that out there.
Well, Alderman Snow, those projects get special considerations, either enterprise or opportunity zone. And we can always examine each specific, uh, instance if there is an issue with them needing to have additional, um, considerations. To do a blanket rule like that, that would mean double dipping for the people who already get the benefits in opportunity zones and enterprise zones. So that is not as, not, in, in my view, uh, applicable.
Mr. Mayor, this is...
If those are pretty significant breaks that they get already with those two instruments.
Mr. Mayor, this is Mike. Um, I don't know if you got the email, but I did forward an email to all the Aldermen today. And for those present in the council chambers, there's a hard copy on your desks. Uh, Gina did an overlay of our enterprise zone map on top of our zoning district map. And if you look at that, virtually the entire property within the city that's zoned out of their industrial, commercial, is already within our enterprise zone. Um, one of the benefits amongst many of the enterprise zone is half off building permit fees already. Um, in fact, the site that Alderman Snow just mentioned, the one, the car wash at Fairgrounds and State isn't in the enterprise zone, and they will be taking advantage of those benefits, including the half off on the building permit fees. Um, generally, only area that's commercial in the city that appears to not be within the enterprise zone is a small segment of State Street and a small second of Logan Avenue, both of which are already built out. If there was a big project, of course, they could come to, uh, the city council and request some additional relief, uh, similar to what we do in the enterprise zone. But out of those two small sections, all of our commercial industrial property lies within the enterprise zone already and has the benefits that Alderman Snow was bringing up.
Well, Alderman Snow would just like to then, um, and maybe instruct the staff to make sure that, um, if somebody does come in for a new project that would qualify potentially for something that they're at least letting known that they could, um, uh, try to advance it through the city council. Because people will tend to come in, oh, it's gonna cost you this much. Well, it, that, you know, that may be a deal breaker for them, and they walk away, um, and not know that they can potentially ask for relief in that case. So, um, just toss that out there, um, that they should at least, uh, make sure people are aware of what is possibly available through relief through the council.
That's an excellent idea, Alderman Snow, and we already do that. When someone comes in, we assemble the entire staff to have a meeting. And if there are special needs, we discuss those, and we will bring them to city council as we did with the folks that bought, uh, the Wolf Dealerships. Um, and as we did with RP Lumber. Uh, that is, that is a general topic that is added to the agenda when we sit down and, and, and visit with folks, as we did with both of the car washes that you're talking about also.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Anything else on this subject this evening? Hearing nothing and moving on, then, to number three, public works unfinished business. Uh, the stormwater utility implementation phasing is on the table, and, and I suspect that we're going to just leave that on the table. Is Brent in the room tonight, or is he gone also?
No, Brent's here, and yes, that should remain on the table. We hope to have something back for November's public works meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. That leads us to number four, public works, new business. Under item A, we have the fuel system diesel fuel dispenser replacement. Brent, would you like to elaborate?
Thank you, Your Honor. Memo in the packets. Uh, we had a, uh, our diesel fuel pump was damaged, uh, when the dispenser hose caught on the dump truck as it pulled away from the dispenser. And at this time, only one of our two diesel dispensers is operational. We have received, uh, three proposals for the replacement of that fuel pump. Uh, T Lee Service was a low price at $9,495. And most, if not all, of the costs of this cost will be paid for through our insurance company. Um, and any balance, uh, remaining will be paid under line item 0153108200, which is our equipment line item that pays for all of our, our fuel dispensers and, and fuel system items. I would recommend approval of the proposal from T Lee Service in the amount of $9,495 for a new diesel fuel dispenser for the street department.
May I have a motion to that effect?
Alderman Porter?
I'll second.
Motion by Porter. May I have a second, please?
Second by Alderman Flurry.
Second by Flurry. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
And I, and I hate to ask, uh, this is Alderman Snow. I hate to ask, so, um, was it our dump truck that did this, or was it one of the other, um, entities that use our dispensers?
No, it was one of our own.
Any additional questions or comments? Hearing not all of them favor approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, under item B, we have the wastewater treatment plant sludge tank trailer replacement. Director Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, memo in your packet, another unexpect, unplanned expense. Um, we have two tank trailers that we utilize, uh, for hauling liquid sludge for land application on our wastewater treatment plant. One is a 1974 model, and our second one is a 1969 model. Um, unfortunately, the suspension on the 1974 trailer has broke, and in addition to that, the, uh, welds are cracked, uh, and the frame is cracked where the tank connects to the, uh, the frame and the, uh, um, uh, suspension assembly as well. We have received a proposal from BOTS Welding and Truck Service to basically rebuild the suspension and repair the frame, rebuild the trailer, basically, in the amount of $14,598.76. We have also located two used tank trailers that would work well for land application of sludge from Midwest Tank and Trailer. Uh, one's a 2012 model for $16,900, and one is a 2010 model for $16,000. Uh, Midwest Tank has indicated that they would sell both of them to us in the amount of $32,000. We'd save $900 that way. Um, our current budget, of course, did not contemplate a replacement of the trailer. However, we did have $40,000 in the budget for a new pickup truck, of which we spent $31,710. So we do have a unexpendited balance of about $8,300 left, uh, that we could apply to the purchase of the trailers. And given the cost of the repair of the 74 unit and the vintage of our 1969 unit, I think it's probably a pretty good idea that we purchase both trailers, the 2012 and the 2010, in the amount of $32,000 from Midwest Tank and Trailer. This equipment will be paid for from the Sanitary Sewer Depreciation Fund, $61,1750. And the balance in this fund is approximately about $580,000. And we will need a second motion then to, um, um, dispose of our 1974 trailer. We plan on keeping the 1969 just as a spare. Uh, but at a minimum, we do need to buy at least one trailer because now is, uh, prime time for land application with crops coming out of the fields. And unfortunately, we only have one trailer, so we're running, we're running, uh, some overtime hours and stuff trying, trying to keep up with the land application efforts.
May I have a motion to approve the purchase of both trailers for $32,000 with the application of the $8,900 toward that cost?
Snow will make that motion.
I have a motion by Snow. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion, Your Honor.
Second by Stevens, thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Continue. Any other, uh, discussion concerning this particular motion that is now on the floor?
I... Snow has a question in regards to, so how much, um, will it cost to retrofit the new trucks with the dispensing piping used for the, um, current sludge application?
Uh, actually, all the piping and stuff is basically there. The only thing we'll have to do is, is install a manifold on both trailers, so we'll have to build one new manifold and just transfer the one manifold from the 74 unit to the new trailer.
So that's stuff we can do in-house without having to go outside?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
Alderman Brereton had a question.
Alderman Brereton. Yeah, Brent, when...
Alderman Brereton, please proceed.
Thank you. Brent, when you say dispose of the trailer, what exactly does that consist of?
Given its current condition and its current status, it's probably gonna get scrapped.
And where does the scrap money go for that?
Goes back into the wastewater treatment plant line items.
Okay, thanks.
Any additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all of them favor approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously, and we will now need a motion, uh, to approve of our selling the other trailer.
Snow will make that motion.
I have a motion by Snow. May I have a se, may I have a second?
Second by Alderman Flurry.
Second by Flurry.
Sorry, Porter.
Further discussion? Excuse me?
Alderman Porter, second it.
Okay, Alderman Porter, thank you. Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all those in favor approval of the motion, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
Frank?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next up, under other, under A, we have a new refuse hauler application from GFL Environmental Incorporated. May I have a motion to approve this licensing?
Make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Arivolo. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Stevens. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion now on the floor?
Alderman Snow, um, can we explain this, um, a little better? Because the memo really didn't give it justice.
Sure. Um, in the memo, it indicates that Waste Management is merging with Advanced Disposal. Both of those firms currently, uh, have authorization to operate within Belvedere. And I think because of that merger, there were some antitrust provisions put in, and some of the, the routes and things had to be, um, disseminated from that company. So GFL is picking up those routes. So, in net effect is, well, you'll still have two, two garbage haulers, uh, in this equation. One will be GFL, and the other one will be the combined Waste Management Advanced Disposal.
Additional questions or comments?
So this just gives them permission to operate, just like we, um, MDC and the others, um, get to operate in the city? Is that basically what we're doing?
That's correct, and they have to have council approval in order to do business in Belvedere.
Thank you.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor? Hearing none, all of them favor approval, will, when your name is called, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Ra, uh, Snow?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Arivolo?
Aye.
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Eight in favor?
Motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, under item B, uh, Alderman Stevens had asked that we put this item on the menu, talking about public speaking times at council meeting. Uh, Alderman Stevens, please proceed.
Uh, after learning what are, you know, it was only two minutes and a total of 20 minutes for everyone to speak, I thought that is barely even enough to get your, get going on what you're, wanna speak about. So I was gonna propose to eliminate the 20 minutes and bump it up to eight minutes maximum. And I'd make a motion to do that.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Additional questions or comments, and I'd like to make a comment. Um, this rang a bell in my memory. And so I went back to the meeting where this was amended originally, ordinance 242H. And this was, uh, in 2014 in December, and the motion was approved unanimously by all of the councilmen present, which there were nine. And, uh, Alderman, uh, Stevens was among those, and he voted to approve this. The Aldermen that voting to approve it were Stevens, Brooks, Arivolo, Campbell, Crawford, Morris, Ratcliffe, Sanders, and Snow. So I think at the time, it was because we had run into a string of meetings where the meetings went on until 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock at night. Um, because there were endless people that wanted to speak at length. Um, we, it has always been our policy, and I believe, uh, Attorney Drela had put something, uh, in an email or in your packets, talking about this. And we have always accommodated people speaking past the limit and allowing additional people. The concern is, at some point, our meetings can be hijacked. But I think all present will agree that when we have had people that have wanted to speak, we've never held anybody to that. Um, I had asked the city attorney to read that into the record last week, simply to, to let everybody understand we do have, uh, in case we need to use it, on the books, an acceptable and universally, uh, voted upon, uh, ordinance that we passed in 2014.
Ms. Mayor.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second now, and as I understand it, the motion is to put a limit of eight minutes per speaker and unlimited speakers. Is that correct, Alderman Stevens?
Yes, it is, unless anyone wants to amend it.
Additional questions or comments concerning the motion now on the floor?
Alderman Brereton?
Yes, sir, Alderman Brereton, please proceed.
Um, while I do, um, 100% agree with Alderman Stevens, um, I just don't know if we necessarily need to, to make a change. I kinda just, um, it's unfortunate that we had to come to this. I'd rather just kinda hate to see it, say it, but, uh, just kinda let it go and not enforce it. Just an idea, but I do agree with Alderman Stevens. Well, that's kinda what I thought. He just didn't want it, uh, you know...
Alderman Snow would like to say something.
Please proceed, Alderman Snow.
So at this point, um, I, I, I understand the, the need and the gist, um, and I don't know that changing the rule to eight minutes and unlimited is necessarily a great idea. I get the point, not drastically opposed to it, but I can see, like the mayor said, you can, you, we can become a very lengthy issue, and we have other business that has to be taken care of. So I believe that if we can add verbiage, that on the fly, we can change the rule if need be, um, as a council, um, at each of the meetings. If somebody makes a motion, if they see that there's, you know, five people that are gonna probably take eight or 10 minutes to do their spiel, um, and it's not all about the same topic, you know, that maybe we can make adjustments or, um, suspend the rule or whatever, if need be, in order to accommodate people. But again, um, you know, leave it up to the council for somebody to make a motion, um, before the public comment if it looks like it's gonna be an issue or not an issue. Just tossing that out there.
Mayor, this is...
Well, in Exhibit A of the ordinance, there is that potential. Uh, the total of public comments at any one meeting of a city public body shall not extend more than 20 minutes in length, in length, unless extended by the chair with the consent of the public body, which is precisely what you have just, uh, proposed. That language is already included in the ordinance. And so it is my feeling that we have already had that opportunity, uh, all along, and we have used it, uh, as needed. So a, at this point, I don't really see a need to, to change, uh, anything that's in, in the ordinance because it makes specific mention that we have the ability at eight... have the ability at a specific meeting with the permission of the chair proposing to the council meeting, the mayor to you guys, that we can accommodate a change for that meeting due to the special circumstances. Does that, does that make sense to everybody? Does that kinda solve the, the issue?
Mayor, this is Mike Drela speaking again. I sent out an email highlighting that fact today to all the Aldermen. I don't know if everybody got it. Not only can you extend the 20-minute time period, but you can also extend the two-minute limit on speaking. I wanna make a couple of things clear. This only deals with public comment. It does not apply to public hearings. So, for example, we have a public hearing on amending the budget, or you have a public hearing on taxation, or you have a public hearing on an taxation agreement. It does not apply to those. It only applies to the common, public, the public comment period, which is when somebody comes to speak with you, speak to you ostensibly in something that's not on the agenda. I would recommend highly against not having rules. The rules are there for a reason. The Open Meetings Act, when they amended that to require public comment, specifically allowed the governing bodies to place limits upon the duration of public comment. Other communities that have not had limits on it have had issues where, especially after flooding or other issues, they weren't able to get to the business at hand because there was just too much going on in public comment. But again, the rules as drafted do allow the mayor and the council to extend that time at any specific meeting that they want to. If you're gonna make modifications, if you wanna make it five minutes instead of two minutes, something like that, that, you know, maybe, but don't eliminate either the cap on the overall length or a cap on the individual speaker, because you do have to get business done.
And I was more worried about-
No comments from, from the council, please?
I was more worried about, you know, people coming in and speaking specifically on items on the agenda, being able to get their opinion out there, you know, unlike the gentleman who was here the other night speaking about traffic stops, which was, you know, not anything to do with us. I'm more worried about, you know, agenda items.
You have a separate code section that governs items on the agenda. Let me see if I can find that real quick. Essentially-
And as a rule, we, we have never, we have never kept people from commenting on item agendas, as, as you, you will recall. We encourage conversation and give and take on agenda items.
So, the rules adopted by the city council previously is that members of the public are not allowed to speak on agenda items that are being debated by the council, unless the council allows them to do so. So, they don't have a right to do it, but the council may allow them to do it. And again, the council has always allowed them to do it. The public comment rules do not apply to that scenario. It only applies during public comment period.
And Alderman Snow has a question. Since Mr. Drela brought it up about the, the public forum portion, where you do have a, an item that was published in the newspaper to be discussed, what is the timeframe on those?
There is none.
Can we or should we?
We could. I don't think that's the discussion here tonight. The public hearing context is a little bit different than the public comment context, because the public comment, uh, public hearing context, and Alderman Snow, you'll be familiar with this from your time in the planning zoning commission, often includes some kind of due process right or vested right with respect to individuals' right to be heard on the matter. That's why it's a public hearing. So, while you can't put limits on, I'm not saying you can't, you absolutely can, you do wanna be careful in drawing those limits so that you're not seen to be basically making it too difficult for people to express or use their rights to make comment during that public hearing. But yeah, you could. We haven't really had a need to in the past, other than the His Glory Mission case in the mid 2000s where we had meetings going till 1:00 in the morning.
Additional questions or comments? Would everybody be then comfortable with just voting down this proposed motion and going with the rules we have with the understanding we have gone through tonight about we'd never really enforce any of these rules? It's up to the mayor and the council at a particular meeting. If there's an issue to, to expand people's ability to speak longer and as many people as need to speak, how does everybody feel about that, since we've gone and back and reviewed what, what the ordinance actually said?
Snow's okay leaving it like it is.
So, to do that, we would vote down the motion in the second. So, having, having gotten this far with it, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye when your name is called. All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Porter.
So, we're voting to vote down the motion in a second? If you vote no, you're voting to leave the rules as they currently stand. If you vote yes, you're voting to modify the rules to have unlimited public comment and have eight-minute limits for individual speakers. Uh, yes.
A, is that right? Snow?
No.
Stevens?
Yes.
Arivelo?
Nay.
Brereton?
No.
Flurry?
Nay.
Frank?
Nay.
Two in favor?
Motion is lost.
Nay.
Two in favor.
Motion is lost. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That brings us to the end of our agenda for this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We don't have the executive session?
No, the executive session is, we, they did not respond to our inquiry.
I'd hope to have something to report to you tonight, but unfortunately, we've not heard back from Apollo Undergroundings, so there's really no need for the executive session this evening.
So, may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Arivelo. May I have a second, please?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Alderman Stevens. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your patience with this. This is the first time I've called in. I really understand now how difficult it is to call into a meeting. So, have a nice evening, everybody. I'll see you soon. Bye.